Yeah.
Yeah.
It takes a long time.
Yes.
How long did that last?
Annual.
Oh gee.
The judging stuff.
That's cool.
Where was that? That's right.
Uh, this year was particularly interesting. So we partner with Maryland.
Okay.
And typically we go help them and they come help us.
What's going on?
Couldn't tell you why Maryland.
Yeah.
Like Pennsylvania or Indiana or something.
Pennsylvania doesn't have that, I feel like. Indiana's one of the worst. We've got like fifty-five thousand kids, people, or as well as smallest. But we partner with another five thousand, say what.
Oh wow.
Can we break this down if I can make the announcement?
Um, but then in between day one and two.
How are ya? How's it going?
Half of our main staff got sick and wasn't there for day two. So I ended up in charge for all of day two, me and one other guy running.
Makes sense. Basically what you're saying is you need a couple of days off, three days off.
We hand out, uh, three hundred and thirty-one national qualifier awards.
That's cool. And these are high school.
Sure. That's quite a coordinator.
Uh, and this is middle school this year, first year with them. Slowly growing.
How's the house?
That's what I spent all weekend doing.
Oh, really?
All my plumbing work.
Oh yeah. Oh, so she's the.
All.
The plumbing isn't.
Well, it didn't make it more.
Oh.
Just doing that day.
Kind of good. It's, it's tough.
Older age has started to achieve all the heroes.
I just, it gets me to think because you.
So we had to replace three sinks.
So constantly like covering an eye.
Fully replaced the kitchen, replaced the faucets and everything.
Sure.
They were all leaking. Um.
Have this monitor.
Had to replace the inside.
Two foots.
Mm-hmm.
And the good of that is you can get a large turn spot.
Yeah.
It's also from here to here on one end.
A valve that was too tall for a tank.
Lose it. Okay, but she's saying this.
We got it.
Yeah, so you know what I mean.
Okay, well, that's good.
The two scopes in there.
But that was just.
Then that is.
Yeah.
And I think that that happened because they probably fixed that after they'd already stopped.
Hmm.
Like a thing.
So is that the tank?
So I'll finish the natural gas line. It's all fixed.
Cool.
On a tying back side.
Okay.
No, is that, I get to have a site on yesterday. A great person.
Yeah, when we had the.
Of course, now you've got a big target on.
Yeah, they're mad at you. But I sent them.
Green bushes in front of the three meter. So all three meters on the same side of the house, right? They have planted these, probably like twelve feet tall.
They just thought the meters looked ugly. They wanted to bet you.
Nine, not pruned at all.
Yep.
See the eyes looking inside some of these. He's gotta go before Dominion shows up and slaps him. So it's fine about, I can't get to my bird here.
So with us, it was. Same as. And it was, yeah, and it's like, you know, it was all over the house. I believe it was like in the front, it was on the side, it was in the back. You're like an island in the middle would break the second lot, which is now combined. It was like for city, I mean, it's like you're actually like, I said, pictures.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Like, it's broad, it's rapid. So we, we started, it was like, we took it out. We got to our bits there and finally there was a couple of kids. They were looking for extra ones and it was pretty tall. We paid them with my pockets.
Take their roots out of the ground?
Yeah. Oh, I think they've come out and they've.
Sorry, from city.
It's a good.
Wow. You? And I mean, some of them, they were standing next to people. The crowd, the day. She's on Human Resources and she likes Human Resources, but she's like, oh, one of them. She's just overwhelming and then if she's only doing benefits, she has.
You don't stress a little from me because.
So I'm sure that's hard. It's, she, she never wanted that. She actually, there was a shortage position broken and they just.
They, they've got a good budget.
Is that where he was seen?
Equipment has been out there. When I search for dermatology.
It's a third of the.
I had a story.
They're looking for somebody to help them. That would be, start, start staying to be a perfect match for, for their training and what they do would have been.
And then after a while I was able to get them to move me to, I was tripping myself. Your name's stenographer? And then. Because I've always made it. And then I could actually see what.
Good that you don't have access to control stuff.
You know, like.
But you're just. Two, is that? Or the end. It's not scheduled one.
You might have to take a couple of bits in there if you can, but, um. But that's. I can read. John's eyes. No, I'm just asking, your name's stenographer? Um. So one size that fits all, I guess. Is as.
Oh, yeah.
Would they share? I've got a push hour type two hundred X Y Z four. I drive over there and guess four must have been there and now it's like, okay. Take that size. It's like eighty dollars, it's like a third day. Charge six hundred bucks.
Yeah.
You're still making money.
That's for. Derek, they're probably paying for the tuition for the person who's gonna get.
I got you down here.
Ah, got me down, huh?
I, I've got. You're truly dedicated to come out in this kind of weather.
And sugar cube?
Pardon me?
Are you a sugar cube? You got a belt and a ring? Where do you get this?
Good, how was stuff? The.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah. Home occupancy permit? Company permit, pardon.
From, uh.
Part of.
Hard. And that's all you need?
I mean, that, that's what I know about.
What's a person?
I am not.
He wants it in writing.
It's six degrees. Yet rewritten the residential zoning code during my time here. So I am not deeply familiar with that.
Where, where do I find? Or is there a place I should find residential bid into your house? I didn't have a fluid word to work.
Well, from my very basic understanding, running a business from your home is not allowed without a home occupation permit.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's the action.
And then you hear action.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Marty will be better able to help you than I am.
I got you. Hi, man.
How's it going? How are ya?
Good.
Here you are, sorry, reading. I had my eyes dilated this afternoon. Who knew that?
That's no fun.
That that takes as long as it takes to settle down.
Do you know what? I had an issue with my eye last year and it took me like a whole night to get normal again. There's some people might say I'm still not.
I thought I'd be good coming out at night, but no, the lights and the reflection are even worse than the daylight.
Yes.
I have to get mine dilated every time I go and my wife has to fix it.
I'm Deborah Catty. And I, do you know who I am and why I'm here? Dr. Pace invited me to come to the.
Oh, okay. No, well, Dr. Pace is my guest.
Well, hello. Come back for more, huh? Come here all day.
Oh, very cool.
It's a nasty night out there.
Oh, well, good, glad you came in. This kid's wild, I might have to invite him to come.
That's one way of looking at it. I was gonna give the invocation. I just usually repeat them after about a month or so. So we're gonna have an actual professional here.
We're actually gonna go over here to Matt and tell him you're here.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Matt.
Hello?
My name is Deborah Catty. I was invited by Dr. Pace to the invitation.
Oh, great. She's from North Canton, Minnesota.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Excellent. You're off the list.
I know, that's what I was just telling her, so.
So you'll be number two on the agenda and I'll invite you up to the podium and you can take. I mean, you can say if you want.
Last name K O T T E.
Okay. Thanks, thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
They've got the log one file.
So they take out one.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I figured it'd be too hard to arrange sort of.
You know, Max Markov. Does a lot. Sets it. Does. That's the problem with that. Gotta keep up with it. So probably have to wipe. We're keeping. Cars on the floor. We're building a.
Yeah. That's right.
By.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So our chemicals. Thirty, thirty-five.
So we're gonna, so why, you know.
Do you?
You know what I mean? Why, why?
I mean, it was, last I heard, it was last week's update in there.
Well.
Well, I did. We're. See, like, I just, my problems, for my problems, is I base everything, I guess, like the first year where it's like boom, we're gone. It's like, you're sold. So, so. I'm. It is so.
Good.
How's it going?
Oh, really? We get a couple of people.
How are you? Hello.
Hi, Steph.
And you knew when excited?
That's what we've done.
Not much.
That's correct. End of the day.
Oh, no, because your fancy one.
Oh, really?
I'm most interested in something larger.
Oh, right.
It's lost.
I think it was, maybe it's.
Should have given a call.
Yes. It turned out to be a bit more threatening.
Really?
So I was at my annual.
One of a future business.
American. And, uh, half of our staff wasn't coming, expected them already.
Because of COVID.
So we partner with State of Maryland.
Okay.
We go help them pick their bus.
Oh, okay.
They had some internal dramas and none of them were coming.
Oh.
So then also between day two, day one and day two, uh, half of our Ohio staff got sick.
No.
So then there were, um, yeah. I don't know what they even.
That's my library.
But I was still standing.
Give your way. Okay, makes sense a little more important than here.
Uh, so. Crown Plaza.
Oh, thank God, I was cutting.
So, so then day two, it was me and a lot of people trying to organize five hundred high schools.
That's what it was.
Yeah.
Oh. It worked with five hundred. You'd speak throughout the day, you'd program.
Yes, thankfully day two was not, so day one was competitive event day, so that was the heart of it.
Oh, that's what I mean. Oh, my gosh. I guess, it's okay, we can just use that regular, you know, things for them to know. Is it a holiday? So it really wasn't like. I would have filmed in five hours.
In the end of it.
The next day, but, um, but the. Yeah. You're not the only person.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe just.
Indicating.
I started with a charger full. Yeah.
There's a setting.
I tried it.
I know.
Good, good.
I don't know what the setting was.
I don't know if they're taking a risk, so.
Yeah, this one is magnetic, so it just drops.
Oh. For me. Okay. Any more? Like I. I know, I can't, your dog looks like she's lying there while I was there.
House of Lords is actually pretty good. The next two.
Like, there's a high.
Start printing the motion sheet.
Yes, yeah. We're like, what does it say?
Landscape sixty-four.
We'll keep reaching over. Kurt, one time we read a play in, um, Cleveland, it was like, the ones for like reading it, like you have to go to a different section. They used to return it. But it was like so many people around us, we're like, where'd you get that?
There's a lesson to be learned.
Yeah. Like if I saw you, I'd wanna be really mad.
Oh, we missed you last time there.
Where would we rather be? Here or Florida? That's a tough one, boy. That's a tough question.
Well, here. Yeah, for one day. Beat LA, whatever.
And it doesn't, even if it's us coming to notice.
Yeah.
It's really quiet, like.
You need some music in the background. We'll start reproducing here if you're ready.
I'll play some Michael Jackson.
That would be fun.
No, I didn't pay, I didn't pay my dues.
I now call to order the city council meeting of February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, the time is seven PM. Opening prayer, Deborah Catty, is I say it right?
Yes, you did.
Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here this evening. Thank you for the invitation through Dr. Pace. Let us join hearts and minds. Spirit of life and love which dwells within, among, and beyond us. Be with us in this sacred time as we are gathered to do your work. We bring many backgrounds, many experiences, many differences. So we are bound together within relationship, within relationship with each other, with the people to whom we're connected, and certainly to the community that we represent and serve. May our time together continue to be sacred as we do the work of service, the sacred work that we are called to do. And may we bring our best and highest selves to guide and inform our work so that we may be always guided and informed by the highest spirit which is love. So may it be, amen.
Amen, thank you. All right.
Praise the Lord. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ben, would you please call the rule? Member Orr?
Here.
Member Holt?
Here.
Member Shroyer?
Here.
Member Warrick?
Here.
Member McLeister?
Here.
Member Warwick?
Here.
Member Matheny?
Here.
Seven, bro? Okay, kind of a motion and a second to approve as presented minutes from February sixth, twenty twenty-three and February seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Make that motion. We're four seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, members of the public wishing to address city council may do so. Each speaker will be given five minutes. Comments shall be limited to legislative, legislative items on the agenda tonight. The rules for speaking will be, uh, will appear on both, on the screens, um, as well as the time. This will serve as the only warning for anyone in attendance. Any violation of the rules will result in adjournment from the premises. And I'm wishing to speak in polite to that.
Chuck Osborne, three oh seven Fairview Street, southeast, North Canton, Ohio. I haven't prepared any special remarks. Uh, little do you know, it takes several hours to put together prepared remarks. I'm speaking on two items on the agenda. Oregon seventeen, twenty twenty-three, where you're conveying the dress for oil field. I think it'd be helpful for my elected representatives here to know a rough valuation of what that conveyance to the CIC will, um, come to the city or come to the CIC. So property worth a million, three million? Uh, I'd like to hear a ballpark figure on it. Secondly, in regards to that, how much equipment are we gonna have to just write off and zero out that are on the books? I think we should know what we're having to just write off the books. All the well equipment. And then third, regarding that property, I'll give you a little history lesson. My first month on council back in December of oh one, the previous council had just appropriated a half a million dollars to excavate that property, uncover discarded drums and whatever else may have been discarded in that. Amazingly, the history of that property and adjoining properties, the city used it as a dump site. A former city official who was instrumental in, in getting that investigation started told me there's a dump truck buried over there. In addition to drums, uh, I'll have to apologize, I did do my homework and go back and look at the newspaper clippings. But December, January of oh one, oh two, if you're interested, look at some old newspaper clippings. At the time, we had eighteen plus million dollars in reserves and the city just wrote out a half million dollar check and I don't know if anything really resulted. They did find some drums, as I recall. So I thought I'd throw that in on seventeen and I hope we can get some figures as to what we're writing off as far as equipment, fencing and whatever else. And of course you can throw in a, the half a million dollars that we spent. Uh, also on, uh, twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, regarding the, uh, I guess anticipation notes that are being rewritten. I did ask Mrs. Alabac and she's always been very helpful and I'd like to thank her. Uh, but I guess this is to extend the debt that we've acquired, purchasing all that Kmart property, the adjoining Stradivant property, which was again a Hoover dump site and that's why it's taking so long now to get some kind of results on whether Meyer is gonna build there because it's a brownfield property. I don't know what kind of, uh, dollars they're having to expend to fix up that property. And sadly, they're not gonna clean it up to the highest standards required by law, which are residential standards. They're only gonna clean it up to commercial standards. I can't believe our representatives will allow a food store where mothers and children frequent the place for food sitting right on top of a brownfield that will not be cleaned up because Myers is gonna take the cheap way out. And she cleaned it up to minimal standards, commercial slash industrial standards. So I think that's a black eye on the city. Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to address councils? Moving on, um, I have a motion and a second to enter in an executive session for the purpose of discussing the, um, purchase of property for a couple of purposes as permitted under ORCG two. Ben, would you please call?
Absolutely.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please, uh, give a word?
Uh, Member Matheny?
Yes.
Member Warwick?
Yes.
Member McLeister?
Yes.
Member Warrick?
Yes.
Member Shroyer?
Yes.
Member Holt?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, uh, we are now entering into executive session.
Lovely night for a council meeting, right?
Oh, yeah, the weather sucks. Um.
I'm sure.
So we'll see what the Supreme Court decides. I think it is interesting, the legal points made on both sides. However, Deborah Dawson didn't, she declined to get, to get into the issue of whether, um, roads and sewers or health or, or, or fall under the public assistance help. She, she was trying to get into that discussion. She, she tried to have it ruled out under technical reasons. She basically just said it's not public assistance, but it's, it's like a battle of the dictionary definitions on that one.
Highway tolls all over.
Yeah, we'll see. Because someone I know once said, they don't have to be right, they just have to be the Supreme Court.
I remember one other thing you told me here a while back. The voters don't have to be right.
What did I say that?
Something like that, back in.
I may, I may have said that.
October, November.
I wasn't, I wasn't, I was repeating somebody, someone else. I think from the Iran contra, like, like the voters have a right to be wrong.
That's what it was.
Yeah, I, I, I was quoting, I was quoting a congressman who said that during the Iran contra hearings.
Well, I think it's true.
Hey, I watched your video online on YouTube on your, on your site.
Okay.
On the, um, of the latest, um, public school.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'll just videotape that for.
Maybe like the fifteenth or so.
For Jill, um, Jill Kemp.
Yeah, that's what.
She asked me to come and videotape that.
Yes, now, I, I live real close to that school, you know, and I, I never attended that school, but I was, what is her, is she having finances or, I mean, maybe somebody? I used, I teach in Kansas City or around Kansas City and I know that the former Lehman High School was down there.
Yeah, they, they read that housing finally. Took long enough.
Yeah, I know for years it was, I taught down there before they closed. And I know for years it was kind of a. for years it was kind of a nuisance as far as the neighborhood vandalism.
Steve Coon was interested in buying that. If the public...
Lehman or North Canton?
North Canton, Portage. But he has to play politics and I'm sure he didn't want to upset the political arena. So he wasn't going to push it.
Does she have any, does she have any ideas on redevelopment? I mean, what, I'd like to say that she has any ideas on what the...
Well, the school could hold some classes in there to show kids, you know, how they learned in that environment. There could be a hundred things that could be used for.
Because I know down at the, on, what, I'm sorry, McKinley Avenue South.
We're still recording, I'll just let you know.
On McKinley Avenue South, I know they have an issue about the Woodfield Mills Elementary School building, that's also being...
Yes, a private owner bought that.
On Donald McKinley Avenue.
Doesn't really have the, the big bucks, is trying to make a go of it. He's made some improvements in it, it looks, the property looks well enough as it is.
They usually use that as an administration building, McKinley High School.
Okay.
And then they withdrew from that and I'm not sure exactly where the administration is right now. I think it's up there by the old Timpkin High School, maybe the former Timpkin High School, I think they maybe McKinley Avenue, the Chinese School, I don't know. But I think that's under redevelopment also. I was wondering if she had some kind of ideas for doing that for the Porty.
Well, as in all these situations, there are tax shelters, which basically you would pay and make it a profitable situation. But again, people such as Steve Coon, I don't know if there's other developers out there, they have to survive in the political arena and they're not going to buck the system. So he quickly has declined, but he was interested in it at one point, is my understanding. I think she had some conversations with him. I don't know if he ever actually came and toured it.
Like I say, I've never actually, I didn't attend, I only attended the Anax in 1964, '65 as a kindergarten student, and I never actually went to the Porty Street main building. I was only in Mary Evans. That town was called Mary Evans. I attended the Anax and then I went to private school, so I never actually attended that building itself, but it's, you can tell, if you look at that building, it's similar to other ones in Canton. It looks like the same construction coming together because the brick pattern and so forth is built almost on the same layout as far as, you know, the exterior, very similar to the same pattern and part of how they designed the buildings. It's all pretty much by circus, same ears too, very similar.
Well, building on Charlotte was the most bizarre decision I have ever heard. The state, for a thousand kids, actually they planned on nine hundred eighty-eight, they suggest ten acres plus one acre for every hundred kids. That means they are due to have nineteen point eight eight acres. Windorf, back in 2017, has actually quoted in the paper stating, because somebody had asked him, why don't you rebuild at Greentown? And his reply was, the ten point three acre Greentown property is not large enough. We're going to look for nineteen acres in northern part of the district. And then he turns around and picks a nine point six acre property and on top of that, it's contaminated. They have confirmed it with a phase one and a phase two environmental study, which means you're going to spend several hundred thousand dollars at a minimum to put in mitigation for the equipment, the contamination that's there.
Now, that nine point eight acres, does that include the footprint that the Porty Street School occupied?
Yes, the nine point six acres.
The nine point six acres.
Yes, it does. So... So what was already estime stone? I don't know why she didn't come forward much, much sooner, but it's a very long process. I think she spent a good year pushing through the historic designation for the property.
You mean by Ms. Kemp?
Yes, her and Bonnie. So you don't announce something that may or may not happen. And, but yeah.
So basically, they need this to demolish that building even to have minus six acres?
Yes. And then they've discovered there's other problems. The library is quite concerned, you're not going to have parking, beautiful parking. So here's another strange thing. The library goes out and starts purchasing property on Portage. Then they turn around and donate those to the school. They actually want to take four properties. They've gotten, actually, they've got three parcels. They actually want in five parcels. There's a couple of holdouts right now. And then...
There's empty property in the neighborhood and then...
Correct. And then they're going to replat all that property once they've acquired these other parcels and they're going to build a parking lot on the corner of Portage and ream for the library.
So basically, where the school is now and the playground is...
It's going to be a parking lot.
That's going to be for the library.
Yes. And...
Will that, will that park not be included in the nine point six acres?
I don't know what the ending result is. It certainly isn't enough. They're not going to have any kind of really playground or green space at all. Our group has pushed that they rebuild up on Northwood. They've got almost like sixteen acres up there.
Oh, okay, I thought, I thought, okay.
It's an ideal place, away from traffic and noise, plenty of green space, open space. And...
Well, that was my, was one of my questions, whether there's kind of any, any possible repurposing of that building as it is now, you know, going in and gutting it and turning it into, whether it...
Either on Northfield or...
No.
North Portage. Well, there's nothing to gut, I think it's...
No, but I mean, turning it into like a apartment shore.
No, no, I don't think there's any desire to do that. It could be a community meeting center. And to go back to what I'm saying, to acquire those four property, actually five parcels that they want and demo the houses, you're looking at about, I think, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Luckily, they got the Larry Hoover from the Hoover Foundation footing the bill for all this. And then it's two hundred thousand dollars to build the parking lot, so that jumps us up to eight hundred and fifty thousand. And then to make matters even worse, the North Canton daycare had to move off of the Charlotte property. That cost another two hundred thousand dollars to move their accommodations. So this, this decision to build it at Charlotte has impacted so many institutions in North Canton at great cost. And I'm just waiting for it to open up. You're going to see a traffic jam, a total mess there, utter total mess. I drove down Main Street here, a mother's old back, people waiting to pick up their children up at Orchard Hill. They were backed up all the way down Hallam, almost to Main Street. Now, what do you think's going to happen all around when you have almost a thousand kids there?
Now, that's going to be grades one, two, and three, is that correct?
No, K one and two. So it was a very, very poor decision to build there, costly for the city, costly for the library, costly for the Y, and then we're not even talking about that stupid traffic circle. And I don't know why they don't just dead end those two streets on the north and south side of that supposed circle. Then you wouldn't even need a circle. What is that cross street there? It's not, is it Hillcrest or...
Hillcrest, yeah.
Just dead end those streets. Let people go around and provide some tranquility for their neighborhoods, eliminate that traffic. But that traffic circle is not going to accommodate or do anything for the Charlotte Street School. Most of your population is coming from the north, the east, the south. So I don't even know why they're building a circle there, it's utter stupid.
When is this, are they, is this the final year for the, is there anything in Porty Street School right now currently? Any kind of, is there any kind of educational classes taking place in Porty Street School? I know at one time...
I don't think so.
At one time it was Montessori, Montessori schools.
That's all Jill Kemp and Bonnie, I, I just kind of lend a little bit of assistance. Very, very poor decision. And we don't know how long this mitigation equipment lasts. I mean, you go out and buy a roof for your house or a heating system, there's a limited lifetime for that. Is this mitigation equipment going to last the eighty year life of that building? I doubt it.
Unfortunately, I don't think they build schools last week or the construction. I doubt that construction, you know, that's...
Well, the Porty Street School, how old's that? That's over a hundred years.
Yeah, McKinley High School. Tuscan McKinley Avenue there, Timpkin High School. That building is like a... Well, actually, it's all I've shown there one time, you know, but that, that building is like a rock, you know?
Yeah, they don't build anything, they don't overbuild like they used to.
Yeah, that's like, yeah, extremely overbuilt. They have, so overbuilt, they have the, the cafeterias on the fifth floor. Now, can you imagine, you had to, they had a freight elevator, the freight elevator, all the food, you know, every day.
Yep.
Up five floors and then touch the cafeteria on the top floor. That's, that's pretty extraordinary, you know? So that was, when they put that school together, that was, that was built by Timpkin money, Timpkin, the roller bearing money. I supposedly, the gentleman that I spoke with, he said that Timpkin go to their specifications and then they turn the keys over to the Kent City school. The idea of that would be a vocational school and to get entered in that school, you had to take a test as far as after she, you know, she tells, like, attend that, that high school. Timpkin enrolled there, probably actually, go and tell that facility. So they fill to their specifications, which was like, like a, like a bank, you know?
How's Lynn, I haven't talked to her in a long time.
He did good, he did good. He hasn't, he's still, she already has wife or daughter, still busy, you know?
Enjoying all of his grandkids?
Oh, yeah. All right, well, I, I just wanted, I heard her, her speech and I did, I would, she had planned it, so as far as this Porty Street School building, so I thought if you might...
Well, they don't hand those historic designations out.
No, I heard she said that this is... And if you ever walk by it, I do a lot of walking with my daughter, you ever notice that building, that Porty Street School building, the one they're speaking about, sure, when they're tearing down, that is corner, the southeast corner there, there's actually a geographical slot there, you know, where they did an elevation or whatever.
Yeah, I think I've seen the marker for it.
Around this, they stopped into the wall there, but they, our federal government, you know, did a...
Well, that brings up another point about the building.
The geographical viewpoint there.
When the, when the North Canton Historical Center located in there, they added a handicap accessible entrance. They actually had a fundraiser to raise a hundred thousand dollars to put that handicap entrance in there. Now, we're just going to tear it all down.
And they'll be out of the place too, then?
Yeah, they've already had the outside, a lot of their holdings. So many institutions have just been very negatively impacted for no reason.
So they're not, the, the school, the school board as a whole is not very receptive to this idea of not tearing it down, that they perhaps pretty much had their mind made up as far as demolition.
Well, they painted themselves into a corner. They won't have any acreage if they, they hope to, like I said, acquire more properties along Portage.
Ms. Kemp's speech there, that's very, right, she, she agreed that the annex of Mary Evans School, that would be, she would be all right with having that demolished, because she said that would be access to Porty Street property. So she would be open to that demolition, but not the, not the old building, the old set up.
I've never been in there. They say it's just beautiful inside there. I've often wondered all these years why the city of Canton tore down McKinley's home.
Well, they lost a lot, they lost the Harder Mansion and they lost McKinley's old home and other, the only structure is still staying on the former Marcus D.C., the Camp Woods Club. That's the last remaining mansion on McKinley Avenue, that was the, where the, of the Ricky Altman's living and so forth, heading up more of the market. And so the women's club of Canton is the only one that... It's right, it's right south of, I'm sorry, right north of the Sonic Camp.
Lynn do much traveling?
No.
Homebody, huh?
Well, you know, it's, when you're retired, you know? He does a lot of, they take, take care of, helps take care of their grandchildren and stuff, so. He seems happy, he's a homebody anyways, he's always got a project going.
Well, council's getting their marching orders, they'll come in here and just say yes. No questions, no hesitation, no criticism.
I got one more question, as far as getting back to that school board here, now they have a bondage coming up on, in the fall, I think she mentioned...
I'm thinking that, yeah.
That's the, and that's concerning, concerning phase two of the...
The middle school, I think.
Middle school, that's the old Hoover High School behind where I live on Fair Oaks.
I think as...
Now, that's going to be, they're thinking about having that facility up close to the high school up on 7th?
Yeah. She had suggested here a while back, why didn't they renovate the middle school and put the elementaries in there?
They did that at Kent South, they're just, they built a new, I work at Kent South, at Kent Local right now, and they built a new middle school connected to that high school down there, Kent South, on South Cleveland. And then they, they moved the elementary school to the old middle school on Fair, on Fair Craft and then demolished the old elementary school. And then demolished the, uh, old elementary school. So that's what they did. And that seemed to work out, but the only big thing they had to do is, one of the things, here's something you really don't think about, they had to like, do things like lowering the drinking fountain. You know, things like that, but for the most part, I guess it was pretty successful as far as because it-
In fact, they put all new air conditioning systems there in the middle school in the last five years, I think.
Right, and new windows too.
Yep. And now we're going to tear it down.
They, they put all the new, uh, new high efficiency chinning windows in.
So what did they do in Canton Local? I know that the high schools, they put the middle school, right?
Yeah, they put the, the new high school is there in South Cleveland. They, they put the middle school just south of there.
Okay, what did they do with Faircreek, the school that's on Faircreek?
Well, Faircreek, uh, Faircreek is now the elementary school.
Oh, it is, yeah.
And they, uh, they took down the, um, you know, they only were down to one elementary school.
Wow. And do they have like three?
Yeah, they used to have Trump, uh, they have, uh, Prairies, uh, Holmes, Prairies. And, um, which made that good job, you know?
Is there, is there a woman gone down?
There may be. And so now the elementary schools were Faircreek, um, middle school. I work, I actually work at the Maltin Chalk Street.
Across the street?
Yeah, they did that transition last, um, May. This is the first year the elementary school is at the former Faircreek Middle School.
Okay, 'cause one time when I, it was empty, but maybe that was in the transition.
Yeah.
Or, you know.
No, it's always been on, every school year. Last year the middle school was there, this year the elementary.
So maybe it was similar to that.
I know, they're down to three buildings.
Wow. The city's moving the Cadillac.
Yes, yeah, they did have a very, they're, I know a gentleman that graduated when they were like nineteen eighty-seven or so, the class is dropped dramatically, it started enrollment. So, the community is, is, I don't know if it's aging or just population in general is declining, but yeah, the enrollment is declining, yes.
She didn't realize it was that much.
Yeah, you're correct, and so what kind of multiple elementary schools have fit into the, in Kent South? Not at a very high standard as far as academics, they were very known good, you know?
And they, they were, as far as paying their teachers, they went to Cadillac.
Oh, I know that, yeah.
He wanted to go, I was in education, so if you wanted, you know, to teach, they, they, they had the tickets.
Any idea who the candidates might be this, uh, this fall?
For here in North Canton?
Yes.
I have no idea.
Obviously not you.
No.
Yeah.
My name is Poison. And I don't think there's much interest for people running, it'll probably be the same people.
Well, we had some new people in the last few years. You know, Stroya and War and, and, uh, Nathany and Wayrick, they're all new.
I don't know that much. You want more people like Stroya who are going to restrict public speaks? I don't think so.
It sounds like Daryl Revolt was more behind that.
Actually, we are part of the-
You know, that, uh, that change in policy.
Daryl Revolt is like Rudy Giuliani. He might have had his heyday, but he's certainly gone downhill.
Probably store property, you know? But, but that building, like, the nineteen seventies, for some reason, they put it under the control of the Canton City.
How many new council members are there? I remember when, yeah, Matt Soretta, I mean, Pat DeWar used to be on council, and then Matt, and then, uh, Soretta, and then, uh,
Fonte.
Fonte, Dominic Fonte, and then, Tim Fox, remember? He used to be in council, I mean, before he was the law director. Uh, and then, um, and then Stephanie Warren replaced him, and then Marsha Kiesling was on, was on, and-
We're kind of, uh, we're part of the district, but we're kind of, do your own thing because of like-
You're so different.
Yeah.
They don't have quality people.
So it works, it's a people working.
And who's the other at large guy? We're to the bank.
At the bank, oh. Dan Griffo.
Right, exactly, Dan Griffo. Blank out his name.
He's moved out of the city.
Oh, he's not really living in North Canton anymore?
He's living up in Saint James, I think.
Where's that?
North of us here.
Saint James? Which county is that in?
I think it's just our county, but he's in Saint James.
That's not incorporated, obviously.
It's a subdivision.
Oh, 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 you mean, okay, is he in the Lake Township side or is he in the North Canton part? Is he in Lake Township then?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's, that's a very nice name. And then there was, uh, there was another person, and then there was the former council president.
There's other people there waiting.
Snyder?
Yes, Mr. Snyder.
I can't even forget Snyder.
But, but, yeah, he can't, he can't, he ran, he tried to run again, and he, he did not succeed, like, had the same situation with you.
Some of them are there six months, and he has kids there from Cleveland and so forth.
And then others have chosen, I mean, I think others lost and they chose not to come, try to come back after that.
I did not realize that.
But, I mean, you know, there's been several members turnover.
Because they've already been-
I don't know, good in my opinion.
The only one, the only one has basically been, I mean, except for a time he was, you know, he went away for work, is Daryl Revolt.
Well, you forget.
And, and then Stephanie, Stephanie's the next consistent, the next person to belong this time after him.
He resigned in the middle of his mayor.
I, I believe so, for, you know, because, because of a new job. Did he stay in North, he moved out of North Canton, didn't he?
No, he stayed there.
Oh, okay, but he had a new job somewhere else? Was it Columbus or Wayne County or?
Yeah, Wayne County. But Daryl resigned in the middle of a water crisis. We were in the headlines of your paper seven straight days.
Is that the one in two thousand, uh, two thousand twenty-one? Two thousand one, two thousand one, okay. Yeah, that's when I just started. Kelly Hill used to, she used to, she probably wrote, she wrote a lot of those articles. I don't even know what's happened to her. She was supposed to go to grad school in journalism at Berkeley, and then I haven't heard what happened to her since. She got married, probably has a different last name now.
Well, it's Kelly Ware, right?
No, no, that's not Kelly Ware. Kelly Weir should be Kelly Young, she, she moved, she moved here from, uh, the Warren paper in Tubal County.
But anyway.
And now she lives in North Canton, so.
But anyway, within a week of that water crisis, what mayor resigns in the middle of a crisis?
Well, apparently the people who voted him to be at large didn't care about that.
Well, there's a backstory to that. The press kept going up to Regula's office where he worked. And Regula didn't like it. And, uh, an Akron reporter told me they caught him in a lie.
What was the lie?
I don't know, I didn't get the rest of the details. But anyway, Regula cut a deal with him, I guess. He let him go, promised him a state job under Taft, and they appointed him to be the Northeast Ohio Economic Development Director. And he held that for four years.
But he had to, but he had to resign from being mayor to get the job.
Well, he was in hot water with that, so he resigned from being mayor. Regula cutting loose.
Well, apparently the people who voted him back in, you know, to be uncounseled, they're not angry about that.
They don't even know about it. That's so long ago for them.
They may not know about it.
I know, it's long, it's long been forgotten.
But he's, he has to campaign every two years, you know, people are free to tell him, tell them about it.
Who's going to be around to tell him, except me?
You could put it on your website or, or your Facebook post or-
Anyway, so he resigned then, came back, resigned again, and then came back again.
And the voters don't, they don't really care about that.
They don't know anything.
Well, I, I don't know how many of the voters are new. How many of the voters like, like have not voted in council elections? Like, I thought there were a lot of seniors in this community, so I assumed they would have been voting for decades, obviously.
They're not knowledgeable voters. Period. When it comes to Supreme Court justices, do you vote for a Supreme Court justice when they're on the ballot? I don't. I know nothing about them. I just leave it blank.
You don't, you don't research the candidates or Google them or read the articles about them?
Not at that level.
Well, obviously they'll be deciding, uh, what happens to those levees from North Canton.
Uh huh. And you have to wonder, does it really make any difference who's there? The state of our politics is pretty bad. If you want to stay around, you're going to go with the, the herd. Just like they do here. You don't have to know anything. You don't have to show up half the time. You just say yes, like everybody else does. And when it comes time for election, hey, he's a likable guy. He's part of our team. We'll promote him.
Okay, that's interesting.
Well, I don't know any other, what other system would you suggest the North Canton have?
Well, you're a vital player in that, but we've, we're slowly losing you. I just read yesterday, there was three newspapers that are closing down, I forget where it was now. They printed their last edition. And we really never, never had much of a investigative journals with a repository anyway. There's a bit, a few things you guys have jumped in on. Brad the man.
Yo! Wow, it's a pretty long meeting. Talk about, how many properties are talking about? They've already been, they've been in there for thirty-four minutes.
Just three parcels down there to Whelfield.
Right, there's some other property that they're also discussing.
Daryl was involved in a big lawsuit on that Dresler property before I came along. They were leasing it out as a driving range, a golf driving range. And you guys did cover that reporting. And the city wound up losing that one.
What do you mean, oh, what do you, who sued who?
The city was suing the guy who had not paid lease payments on, on the rental.
And how did the guy win? How'd he get out, was he supposed to pay lease payments?
Yeah.
Well, then why didn't the court enforce the contract?
That's a good question. Ask Daryl about it, he'll, he'll tell you. He's still bitter about it today.
But you don't remember the facts of the case?
It was a little bit before I came along. Trying to think of the guy's name. Daryl, let me refresh my memory. I think he wound up owing the city, I don't know, a few hundred thousand dollars. And I don't think we ever collected it. Rob, where about you live?
I live in Plain Township. I live, uh, nearest friends. Well, I don't know, your, your thing is recording, so I don't know if I want to say where I want, where I live.
That's a good-
We, we, um, very intense thing.
Somebody's going to say-
Got their GEDs out, where they have seventeen G's in the gold on a sheet there. So we never had this financial, but, like I do now, so, we, we send, uh, we, we talk three hours, we, six weeks for that. And they have a test, and we're like, we're going to be registered. And then I, and I got this to the board, so, selection, that is my thing.
Do you go home or rent?
I rent.
You got kids?
I, I do not. How many kids do you have, Chuck?
Got three.
Oh, okay, and they're all grown, right, and they moved away?
They're older than you, Bob.
They're older than fifty years old? Really?
Some of them.
You have kids older than fifty? Wow, you had, you had them when you were young, didn't you?
Yeah, I got one of them. Fifty-one this year.
Are you, are you in your seventies?
I'll be seventy-four here.
Wow, you're, you're two years older than, uh, Mr. Revolt.
Hand, laser.
I'm sure that's your perspective.
You don't agree? You're going to reserve that answer, right?
I think it depends on, it depends on the issue. Wow, my gosh, you know, so, it's gotta be, it's gotta be weird when your kids, and you can also, you know, can, 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 can get, can, uh, can be retirement age, my gosh. So that's not really, I mean, that was the old retirement age.
I'm a great grandfather.
Are you, are you, wow! You got, you got grandkids in their twenties? You're, so you're a patriarch.
Great grandkids.
Or are any of them active politically?
No, they don't even live around here.
Oh, okay, they don't live in Ohio? Oh, okay. Wow, do you and your, do you and Rita go visit them often?
Uh, they're former primaries.
Oh, okay. Any kids with Rita?
No, she doesn't have kids.
Oh, okay. You know, she's taught a lot of students, right? She was an English teacher at Harvard?
Okay. No. Because we're, you're allowed to take each test three times, and then if you fail the third time-
Yeah, we're old. She actually just turns them in for it.
Wow, there's no way, I would never have guessed that.
I just tested, I did not teach that, I just test, I was just testing. At that time, I was, I taught it one-
The years fly by. Well, they could have an executive session at the end of the meeting, but I'm sure they want to vote on something tonight based on their-
They could, it's a regular meeting, they can, uh, they don't have to give advance notice of anything they vote on.
I wish for two minutes.
Well, there's no time limit, it's set on executive sessions. What happened to Marion Boman? She used to come all the time. And, uh, what was the name of the, Melanie Roll? What happened to them?
I don't know what they have now.
Oh, okay. I guess maybe they lost interest in, in city council business? Well, Jamie McLeary should be one of those among the people who regularly attended meetings. He used to send out press releases, remember? Who did he, who did he run against the first, that, did he run at large when he first ran?
He ran against Snyder and Keesling.
Oh, in Ward Four? Keesling was at large. Oh, no, no, Snyder was Ward Four, and Keesling was at large at the time.
They dragged him down to the Elections Commission, Ethics Commission, I get it, next to...
Oh, because of that campaign advertising?
Yeah.
When it was in, and I think it's the Supreme Court ruling, they can't, right?
Well, matter of fact, airplane in Nevada came apart in mid-air, I don't know what.
And he went, he went dead?
They all die when your plane falls apart on yet nineteen thousand feet.
Did that happen today?
The last day or two.
How many people on the plane?
Five.
That was one of those smaller planes?
Yeah. Here's a picture of it. It's a Pilatus, it's a turbine-powered, single-engine.
Now, you can't, you can't fly anymore, right, because of health conditions or...
I could, I could.
Oh, you could? Okay. Do you still have your license?
Yeah, it's good. Your entire life. You have to have that medical certificate with you.
Did you have your own plane? You'd have to rent it, right?
I'll let somebody else pay for the plane and the gas. There's the last thing, I flew at Akron Canton.
Oh, you rented it?
No, I flew it for a corporation.
Oh, you did, okay.
David Brennan.
Okay, but you can't regularly be a pilot for work, because of, I think it was a health condition or something like that?
I could fly either one. There's a lifeline I used to fly for, some on the left right there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm dual-rated.
Okay, so you still could work as a pilot?
I could fly helicopters or airplanes.
Okay, I didn't know the whole, I didn't know the whole situation, so...
And they've changed the rules tremendously since I had to leave it back in the eighties.
You've been retired ever since?
Uh, no, I've done other things. I worked for Bank One for a year. Worked for Green Tree Finance up in St. Paul, Minnesota.
As a banker?
Credit.
Oh, credit officer?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I loaned people millions of dollars.
Wow.
Went out to Kansas City for about a year, worked for a computer, I can't think of the name of it now. Kind of Time Warner Cable out there. Worked for the FAA down in Florida. Did absolutely nothing. I quit and came back home. It's fine with the government, you don't have to do anything.
Were you born and raised in Orton?
No, I was born in Royal Kentucky.
Oh, okay. How'd you end up in North Canton?
I came up here to file at Falcon for Brennan.
Brennan?
David Brennan in Akron.
Who was he?
He was a big mover and shaker up there. He owned the Brennan Group.
Oh, he served for his company?
Yeah. Yeah, I flew in a couple governors. Entertainers. Even flew a Supreme Court Justice.
Which one?
Oh, he, he, he's actually the only Supreme Court Justice who resigned to join John F. Kennedy's administration. I can't think of his name. Look it up here. Arthur Goldberg, that's who I'm talking about.
Oh.
Secretary of Labor.
Oh, interesting. He left his lifelong job to be, you know, be in the cabinet.
JFK's cabinet. I brought him here to Akron from Washington to speak at the Akron Law Schools. And I took him back to DC. It was a privilege.
You remember that accident, uh, I wrote about William Blair's obituary that, he was in nineteen ninety-two at LaGuardia Airport, American Airlines flight. It crashed right after takeoff. It didn't properly de-ice. He was on the plane. He was a local attorney. Died a couple weeks ago. Died in late January, early February. And he survived that accident.
I did see that, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that was, I mean, that's...
Said he was fearful the rest of his life?
I don't know about the rest of his life, but he was, he definitely had issues every time. He, he, he continued to fly, but it took a lot for him to get on a plane.
Yeah, yeah.
He did it, but it was difficult. And you know what? I don't blame him.
I don't blame him either.
If that happened to any of us, we'd be the same, I mean, um...
You don't mess around with that icing condition stuff?
Well, the thing is, the problem is, they, they put the de-icer on, but then they let the snow come in on the wings for like twenty, thirty minutes. It was like a long period of time beyond like five to ten minutes, and then they tried to take off, and then they immediately crashed right into the bay, and it crashed onto the runway, and then went, and it slid into the bay. And he managed to crawl out of the fuselage that was on fire with jet fuel spewing everywhere. He managed to get out of that, and half of these on the plane were killed, or more than half were killed.
They had a big military transport taking off up in Newfoundland. And killed everybody on, like a hundred and eighty troops. There's a charger, again, same thingy. You've got to make sure that icing conditions, those wings have got to be clean as a whistle.
Yeah, obviously.
I mean, just a little frost later, and you're asking for trouble.
And what would you do? I mean, would you just refuse to take off, right? You have the authority to do that as a pilot, right?
Yeah.
You'd say, "We're not doing it."
We'd defrost it again, or whatever you have to do.
Or you'd go back to the gate, say, "Forget it."
Defrost it again.
I mean, does the captain have the final authority to not fly? I don't think it's safe to fly, we're not taking off.
They've changed their procedure nowadays. They actually have the de-icing right at the runway. So that's the last thing that happens, and you taxi right out and take off.
Right.
We don't tax, de-ice, and then board passengers, and spend forty-five minutes, and then take off when it's snowing like that.
Like they were gonna go nearly an hour now.
Oh, yes, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe my questions are making them think. Well, actually, roll some popcorn or something.
It worried me so much because, you know, when the kindergarten teacher's gone to the afternoon, you know, she's just gone to... It was so nervous.
Yes.
Kids are so good, I'm so nervous about them because they were so, you know, such a...
Think Smucker's got a pretty good chance of winning Mayor Canton?
Uh, there's so many candidates, it's very difficult to predict. I mean, you just need one candidate with the plurality to win, obviously, and it's just hard, it's just hard to know. I mean, and also the primary electorate is much more limited than the general, obviously, so... It's very difficult to predict that one. And I think this is Smucker's third try for mayor, I think. Remember, he was the candidate against Janet Creighton?
Was he?
Yeah, he was a Democratic nominee, and Janet was the Republican. Janet beat, and Janet won, obviously. I think two thousand and three, I think it was?
If you got a good memory for that.
I mean, he's had a, he's had his chances before, so, I mean, if people don't know who he is by now, I mean, what does that say?
You just made my point. People, they don't know who to vote for, they don't know anything.
On either hand, you know, sometimes, you know, sometimes a candidate's time has come. Sometimes the first couple times they've tried, the voters just weren't ready, they weren't in that mode, and now they are, so you never know.
Can I get a motion and a second to adjourn from executive session?
I will move that we adjourn the executive session. The record should note that no formal action was taken during that executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Okay, Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance to recodify the provisions of Chapter eleven seventy-two, Schedule of Fees, Subsections eleven seventy-two point oh-one A through H of the codified ordinances of the City of North Canton, which establish fees for building permits, plan reviews, and other related services from their current placement in the City of North Canton zoning code to more appropriate placement in the City of North Canton building code.
Daryl? Well, as the clerk has indicated, this is a relocation of one section to, from the code, zoning code to the building code. It is a probably new and improved section from an appearance standpoint, greater clarity. But we should also note that the fees are not being raised. They're being transferred from point A to point B. Questions or comments? Move we adopt the third reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of Resolution twelve dash twenty twenty-three?
A resolution endorsing and adopting the final draft of the twenty twenty-three master plan for the City of North Canton, Ohio.
Okay, um, that's personnel and safety? No, that's you, sorry. I skipped right over that, right here.
All right, this is the third and, third and final reading. Already actually working on the plan. But I'd like to do, before we vote, see if we have any final comments. Christine, I'll lead with you, because you played a role in this. Do you have any observations or comments?
No, I'm just glad to see this moving forward. Proud of the work that we've done in it, excited about the steps that are being taken.
Patrick?
Nothing to add?
Ben?
Anything to add?
Council, anything to add? John?
Well, this is with the, we took the, what, Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Street and pulled out of the plan.
Correct? Correct. Stephanie?
Nope.
Okay, then. So we've got a general longer-term guide. May not be complete, may be amended further. Uh, but it'll certainly give future councils an agenda. I would assume that our policy analyst will be at some point down the road advising councils to how many of the projects have been completed or their status. You may recall, I did that a couple years ago. It was very helpful. So I think the pieces and parts are in place for moving forward. And I'm absolutely confident as we get into this that we will have some other items that will be added to the plan down the road. So I will make a motion that we adopt.
Second?
Third reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of Resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty-three?
A resolution appointing Terrence Seeburger as North Canton's representative to the Stark County Board of Health for a five-year term beginning March first, twenty twenty-three, and ending February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-eight.
Uh, David?
Okay, so Mr. Seeburger is Mayor Wilder's appointee, a nomination for this position. He has been active on the board for many, many terms and wants to continue to represent North Canton. This is the third reading. Questions? Make a motion that we adopt Resolution fifteen twenty twenty-three, third reading.
Hold seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of Ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of North Canton to enter into an agreement with the North Canton Community Improvement Corporation for the conveyance of the real property known as the Dressler Wellfield in the Jackson Township. Stark County parcel numbers one six eight zero six seven zero, one six eight zero six six six, and one six eight zero six six... one-six-eight-zero-six-six-six, and one-six-eight-zero-six-six-eight. Collectively, the properties from the City of North Canton Community, from the city to the North Canton Community Improvement Corporation, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Stephanie?
Okay. We're wishing to sell this property and relieve the taxpayers of the burden of the maintenance of this property. I don't know if there's anything else you want to say about it, Patrick, or Gina, instructor?
Oh, I mean, I think, just in the grander scheme of things, that the, we believe that there's a stronger need to develop some new wellfields that are in a better location. This one has been, you know, largely built around. There was a rubber company there, Tristan Rubber, burned down a few years back. Fozknots is, you know, not far off. And so we think that there's some better opportunities for us. And so part of that, the intent here is that being able to monetize this asset, to be able to pay for the new, a new well and development and interconnect to our system.
Okay.
Mr. Duriel, the properties consist of how many acres in total?
It's about six point seven, six point five.
In a prime, golden village area?
So it's the foot of the Hall of Fame Bridge, that area is, you know, getting more developed.
So one parcel's two point six two. Looks like the other parcel is. Three point one nine.
And the other is point eight.
Point eight nine.
Okay, so it's six point seven.
All right, if there are no other questions, I move to adopt.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
Revolt moves?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty-three under the suspension, suspension of the rules?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rule twenty-three to allow for consideration of what will be ordinance twenty-three dash twenty twenty-three without a committee report?
Revolt moves, suspension of the rule?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance twenty-three dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of economic development revenue bonds of the city under section thirteen, article eight of the Ohio Constitution and chapter one sixty-five of the Ohio Revised Code to pay costs of a project as defined in section one sixty-five point oh-one of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of creating or preserving jobs and employment opportunities and improving the economic welfare of the city and its residents and the state of Ohio, providing for the pledge that the purpose of certain non-tax revenues, establishing certain funds of the city, approving related documents, and declaring an emergency.
All right, Stephanie?
Okay. This is kind of an exciting opportunity we have, some key words, economic development, creating jobs, employment opportunities, and improving the economic welfare of the city in our northeast region. Patrick?
Yeah, so our test here is to obtain a source of funding for the next big project that we're working on. And I think you summed up exactly what it, what it is on. And as we're closing out, you know, the Meyer project, and we will be closing with them in the next two weeks, and the other things that fall into place, we're gonna, you know, we're wrapping up that, that phase. That, that's all, gonna be out of our involvement. It'll be on to the developers to do what they're doing. And you start to see some stuff up there already. So, but then it's, you know, not resting on our laurels. And I think that ultimately, when that's all said and done, and we, you know, when it is said and done, that, that we will be able to report to the community a tremendous financial success in that endeavor. And so, but we can't rest on our laurels, we have to move on to the next thing. Because we have to grow the revenues of this city. We have to grow the opportunities for us to be able to get all different sources of revenue, be it property tax or income tax, from some businesses that would like to become part of our community. So we need to move on this with the emergency clause because, as you know, the, you keep an eye on what the Federal Reserve is doing. They're in the business right now of raising rates, so we would like to lock in a rate now. And in order to do that, we gotta, you know, put them in a forty-five day notice to, we want, we want the rate locked in before they need again. So that's why we're moving rather quickly with the financing, and then it'll be available to us once all the underwriting process is completed a couple of months from now.
Hi.
Anyone else?
I'm gonna move to adopt.
Revolt, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council, council requiring three, three readings?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance twenty dash twenty twenty-three under suspension of the rules?
Twenty-three dash twenty-three.
Twenty-three dash twenty twenty-three, sorry.
Revolt moves?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to department reports. Patrick?
There's a first. Stephanie? Oprah Magazine. The new edition. North Canton is on the cover.
Love it!
Pretty cool. Dogwood Park, a nice big feature spread in there, a couple pages.
Can you pass that around?
So that, that's a good thing. Our park superintendent, Brian Hill, and our director of park development, Catherine Freen, will be going to a conference tomorrow. It's worth noting, it's a conference being held at the behest of Stark Parks. This is the first time in the county's history that someone is pulling together all the different park jurisdictions to come have a meeting, to talk about parks in Stark County. Not just Stark Parks, but Jackson, and Plain, and Perry, and North Canton, and Alliance. Everybody coming together to talk about what they're working on. And opportunity to either, you know, maybe co-develop or to have more of a comprehensive strategy as we approach park development. So we're gonna participate in that. We're pleased to report. And I think that is all I wanted to add tonight.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's cool. Okay, moving on, Gina?
We are in progress of changing utility billing systems, our software. We are on target for a go-live date April eighteenth. So in your bill that will be coming out shortly in the beginning of March, we put a, just sort of a reminder notice in there. And then coming in your April, the following bill will have sort of some instructions, what you need to do, what will stay the same, what won't stay the same, how to sign up for payments, reminders. This new utility billing system is much more informative and much more user-friendly and has a lot more payment options than, though, Apple Pay, Google Pay. We're into the new century now, so it'll, it'll be, it'll be advantageous for all users. And so we're looking forward to that, April eighteenth, tax day also. But it's a big day in finance. That's all I have to report.
All right, thank you. Mayor Wilder?
Yes, thank you very much. I want to thank council again for working with the city administration on twenty-three dash twenty twenty-three, as we're continuing to improve our, our next phase in economic development for the city. So I appreciate your support on that. Also, I'm glad that Mr. Seaburger will be representing us on the Stark County Health Board. And most of all, I want to thank all the community partners and citizens and council who worked on refining the twenty twenty-three master plan. It's been quite a journey over the last year and a half or so. But I'm glad to see that we have a little bit of a roadmap now as we go forward. And most of all, I think it's important, as it says in the ordinance, that council will review this annually so that we'll continue to stay up to date on the things that we've been able to accomplish or things that we have to have to work on. So I just want to say thank you for all those involved in working on the master plan. And of course, as Patrick just summed up, through the Ohio Parks and Recreation Association, us winning the governor's award again for this year. It's truly a, a real accomplishment for our community. And you'd be surprised how many other communities now are reaching out to us for our ideas and what we came up with for that park. So that's all I have right now, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Ben?
One of the items in the master plan you all approved this evening is improving our digital offerings for residents, so how easily people can apply to things online. And thanks largely to the same software running rental registration through. We are plowing full speed ahead with that. So as of today, you can apply to pretty much all of the city's boards and commissions online or our website without ever having to come into City Hall anymore. So that's ZBA, planning commission, civil service, evolved and digitized.
Fantastic.
Mayor Paul? Thank you, that's great news. Jamie?
I have no report this evening, other than just saying I'm excited that we're moving into the modern era of our offerings, so.
All right, David?
So, on the personnel side, we have some new members to our fire and EMS. Firefighter, paramedic Megan Brown. We have firefighter EMT Kevin Lesman and firefighter EMT Eddie Murray. We're all sworn into their positions, they are gonna be hiring, are being part-time. We also have one returning part-time member, and that's Brittany Zimmerman as a firefighter EMT. Now Brittany actually works for Ms. Alabeck, and she is going to be moving to firefighter EMT. She's gonna stay for a month to help train our new employee, which is Nancy Deckard. Nancy comes to us, fully trained, actually, in most cases, as a utility billing clerk from Lewisville. So somebody who's gonna be able to step in and move in real quick and has already worked with Ms. Alabeck in the past, so. It's worked out really well, so. A lot of good things happening on the employee's side, and that's the strength behind the city, so. Good people. That's what I have.
No one corrected your, your spelling or your pronunciation of those names, is that?
I know. Scary, isn't it? Been practicing.
You're doing well.
Stephanie?
Okay. I have been fortunate to go to a number of different events, kind of focusing on Black History Month. So we were all invited to go hear Congresswoman Amelia Sykes. It was not this past Friday, I think, but the Friday before. And so there were, let's see, Mayor Bernaby was there, Mayor Kathy Kavazera Perry, a couple commissioners, Lawrence Township, myself, Brooke Carless, and maybe a couple others. And it was, she was just wonderful. And it was truly, for those of us who've been on council, it was the first time I've ever received a notice from someone in Congress asking to meet me in person. And she had just been over to East Palestine, and she had gave some history about that. And of course, I wanted gossip, so I said, what was the State of the Union address like? And she was just so honest and kind of talked about her story and how she got there. I really didn't know that, so that was great. And then on Monday, President's Day, we were also asked to participate in the NAACP event that they had. And I know many of us got that event very late, like on Thursday, I think it was. And, but I did respond, and Robert, oh gosh, Robert Thompson, I think. Do you, do you know Robert Thompson? He was in leadership, so I wasn't sure if he was one of the fir, I swear he said he was one of the first classes. So I didn't know if he had participated with that or not. And then Hester McDaniel is the NAACP chairperson. And so we each had fifteen-minute increments. And so I talked to them about North Canton and kind of even what we're doing downtown and with leadership and just the importance of diversity and having different people in the room. And so I am gonna join the NAACP. It is not just African-American, it is a cultural organization. And also, I thought it'd be a great opportunity to have him come and speak before a meeting, just like the library did, and kind of introduce us to what they're doing. His wife actually works in the North Canton City Schools. Mrs. McDaniel, she is, I don't know what her role is, do you know her?
I know her, I don't know what she does.
Okay. So then, I went to the Black Caucus that night, that was at the Kingdom Center, which was the old Jewish center, and got to hear the different candidates from Mouseland and Canton. And just a, a great, you were also there, Mr. Wang, during a report. But just a neat to see so many different people. And I knew so many people from leadership and just the different things that we've been in. And definitely some different, some North Canton people were there as well. And then finally, I was able to attend the Black and White Ball this Saturday down at the Doubletree Hotel, and Amelia Sykes spoke again. And then I think it was, who was one of the OJs was there as well? So I was kind of famous. So they were there, and again, just a great, great evening supporting what the Urban League has done. That was by the Urban League. But they were great about just announcing so many people that have been a key part of that organization. And definitely, again, so North Canton people, that happened. So, and then a lot of people took off and went to the Windchime Ball. So if those of you, did you guys go into that? Supporting cancer, and that was a sellout event. And the woman that started that was just from McKinley. Her mother had passed away when she was in high school. And then she's become a huge Glen Oak advocate, and it's, because she's does some marketing for Glen Oak. But the neatest thing about that, it is such an all-encompassing benefit. And you see so many people, and that's what I love. It's not just for one group, it's seven hundred and fifty people all supporting an amazing cause. So really cool things going on in our community. And anything that we can do to be more part of diversity and showcase that and be more of a community with opportunities, I love that. So that's where I was.
Cool, cool. Thank you. John?
Well, in Ward Four, I've been walking the ward, talking to a lot of different people. They have some concerns, which most of our constituents do. But they're, 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 they're small. You know, it could go from geese to park equipment to the roads.
Skunks.
Well, no, I didn't get no skunk before. I've talked to Patrick about it. He's gonna take the roads and drive by, he's done a great job. You should get out in your wards and look at these roads because there are a lot of bad roads. There's bad roads all throughout the county, we're not the only ones out there. So talk to your people in your wards and, you know, find out what, what's really on their mind. Because many of us will probably run again, we don't want to get hit with all these questions. You know, show you care. You know, and it, it, there's a lot that goes into this community. We live in a great community here in North Canton.
Just speaking of the roads, I know in my neighborhood, you're working on all the cash basins. I mean, it was a warm day, and the daffodils were starting to bloom, and you were out replacing cash basins. It was amazing.
Yeah, thank you for that nod. We've been taking advantage of this weather. It's great weather to lay concrete, right? And so we, these would normally be done just, you know, maybe weeks before we started the paving of those streets. But allowing it to be in there now, as I was mentioning to John, pre, prior to meetings, is gonna give us an opportunity to do other things because we knocked that out of the way now. And so some of the concerns that we have with some of the streets, we're gonna have the ability to get that paving machine out there as soon as the asphalt plant opens in mid-April.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you. Not so much of a report, but just as a comment. You know, sometimes we breeze through things in our meetings, perhaps without a level of reflection. We heard both from Patrick, Jean, and Ben tonight talking about their software activities. Jean's got new program coming in, Patrick's got some, Ben has referenced it today. And, you know, I think when, if you look back over the last forty-eight, sixty months here in the city. I think when, if you look back over the last forty-eight, sixty months here in the city, where we've, where we started and where we are today is like the difference between the light side and the dark side of the moon. Clearly, uh, as a service organization, the ability to, uh, make doing business with a city easier, uh, should be our objective, and we, we've made great, great strides in that. You can do all this stuff online, whether it's permits, rental registration, et cetera, that's really terrific. But I think the other element to this is that, you know, many times we make decisions sort of, or we approach decisions with anecdotal information. And I think behind the scenes, right now, we're on the cusp of being able to gather more data, more comprehensive data across a range of municipal activities, integrate it, and create a, a picture of how our city and our residents are operating and living. And I think that is going to be the, the, as we go forward, not only do we want to encourage the further and continued development of that activity, we want to make sure that it doesn't fall away, that we have this. So if we're looking at neighborhoods, we're looking at catch basins, you know, I think one of these days we're gonna be able to tell you when every catch basin in town was swapped out. When was the last time we did a curb project on a street? We'll have all of that, we'll have, we'll have police reports. And it'll be at, I won't say it'll be at our fingertips, it won't certainly be at mine, but, uh, it'll be a call. But the point is, it will make for better decision-making, and I think, you know, that's kind of one of the things that the taxpayers expect of us is to make good decisions, and I think some of this data, most of the data that we're collecting will help us be smart about the money we spend. It belongs to the taxpayers. That's my report. Confirmation?
Thank you. Christina?
Um, just wanted to say congratulations to the YMCA, who celebrated their one-hundredth anniversary on February eighteenth. I was able to attend an event kicking off a year-long celebration, the mayor was there and gave really great, um, proclamation. It was really cool because Larry Hoover read part of Boss Hoover's announcement that he was going to fund this YMCA and create a community building here, and I just think, as I was sitting there listening, I'm like, this is, this is where we originated, right? Like, I mean, this, this man put this vision into place and allowed so many amazing things to happen in our community, and I just think, you know, we have this responsibility to continue, and I'm really proud of how the buildings have been kept up and the YMCA's maintained and the library's maintained, and City Hall looks great now. I just, I'm proud of our community, and I think, um, really, it was cool to celebrate the Y's one-hundredth anniversary. And that's all.
Awesome.
And, Ms. Wilder, would you mind if you wouldn't, uh, elaborate on the, uh, efforts between the library and Walsh in the senior programming?
Sure, yeah, so, in, gosh, it was June or September, I was on medical leave, but we launched, um, a partnership with the city, and this kind of came out of the Oprah Conference, um, that I attended, not this past year, but the year before, realizing that we don't have a recreation department in the city, right? Like, there's parks and recreation, we don't have recreation. Um, and so as, you know, Catherine and I were at this conference, we were talking through all of, um, what these other communities were doing, and they have senior programming, and, you know, all of this programming going on, and we just don't have the capacity to do that as the city, but the library does, right? And so the city has, um, space, they have the civic center, so we launched programming. The city, uh, the library actually hired someone specifically to do that, as well as like delivery to senior citizens, kind of to reach out to special populations, and so every Tuesday and Thursday, we have Sam Kui Kahi, um, at, her husband is Hawaiian, at the civic center, managing programming from ten until three, it's really cool. They start with some sort of physical component, it was yoga for the first several months, now it's Tai Chi in partnership with Direction Home, which used to be the area agency on aging. Um, so Tai Chi from like ten to eleven-thirty, and then there's a little break where these, you know, seniors bring in their lunch, and they get together and talk, and they forge these really great friendships. And then there's a speaker or an activity or a craft or something that happens then from like one until three o'clock. So attendance continues to grow, um, it's, it's just been a very, very cool partnership, and, go ahead.
Now, is Walsh involved in something new?
So Walsh then approached the library, um, and said, you know, "We want to partner with the, with the city of North Canton more." How do we get involved, why they approached me, I mean, you know, I guess I do things and, you know, I'm on council, but they chose me, they came to me, and so I was like, okay, I'm gonna introduce you to all these people. But one of the things they do now is once a month, they come in and do programming for the seniors, something they're doing, I think it's next month. They're coming in and doing a bring-your-own-device program, so seniors can bring their phone or their iPad or their Kindle or whatever they might have, and they're bringing their, um, some technology students in their Bosch IT team as well to come in and help people. Yeah, it's very cool, so, yeah, we're really proud of it, it's been going well, um, and I just think there's a lot of opportunity for growth there, too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
That's awesome.
You have to be a senior to bring a device in.
You can bring it to the library, anytime.
Um, I don't have a lot, I just, you know, most of what I was gonna say has already been taken, but, um, what I notice when I listen to everybody speak is that, that we've made a shift over the last several years uh, to become more proactive about stuff, so, I mean, all of that stuff, the, the parks, the software, um, programming, I mean, all that stuff that just didn't exist three years ago even, um, so it's pretty amazing. That is awesome. That's very cool, so, I'm very, I'm very excited about a lot of stuff going on, it's a good time to be, um, in North Canton, so. Um, moving on, final call for new business? Uh, the meeting calendar, um, March sixth we'll have the committee of the whole, March thirteenth we'll have city council and committee of the whole. March twentieth we have no meeting, uh, March twenty-seventh we have a regular city council meeting. Why, why are we doing the two, are we just moving back the twentieth to the thirteenth?
I think it was just in anticipation.
Okay, all right, okay, okay. That sounds good, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Revolt moves?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? adjourned?
All right, I have a first-class comment. No, I trust them as a day and then... Yeah, yeah.
Will you take your, Mr. Osborne?
Okay.
Bring the slow down.
Yeah. My little motorboat out there.
That's why they're trying to reach. Yes, okay, but it was so reasonable, and I'd be like...